Good evening and welcome to the June 9th New London Board of Selectmen meeting. It's fine if I'm not on there, doesn't matter to me.
Well, you know what, they got the cameras switched.
Yeah, they flipped the camera. So, in any case, just a reminder that this is being recorded visually as well as sound. And we're going to start off with the Building and Facility Committee Police Station Site Review Subcommittee Presentation. So Chief Cobb?
Thank you. I'm here tonight. There are several members of the Subcommittee here in the audience as well. So I know the Board of Selectmen has probably received the report from the Subcommittee dated March 22nd, 2022. And that you've probably already read that, but I'll just kind of go through the main points here in the report and then open it up to other members of the Subcommittee. I know some of them might have some other things to add here tonight and we can fill in the blanks as we go with any sort of questions that the Board has for us. The Site Review Subcommittee was formed by the BFC in November of 2021. And we had our first meeting in late November of 2021 as well, where it established an initial process of trying to identify any site in town that might be suitable for a police department going forward. So our scope was, or our eyes were pretty wide open at the beginning of it, trying to take anything and everything in, any possible sites. And then we intended to narrow it down from there. We met pretty much bi-weekly since then. And at the outset of it, the Subcommittee identified a list of what we called preferred characteristics. Those weren't going to be any, any deal breakers, so to speak, but just to try to give some parameters around the sites that we were looking at to see if they would be viable options going forward to present to the town. So we prepared a list of all town properties, all properties that were known to be for sale that might meet the needs and a number of properties that weren't necessarily in those, fit neatly in those two categories, which gave us a total of about thirty, of thirty-two parcels that we looked at initially. We concluded pretty quickly that twenty-three of them wouldn't sufficiently meet the needs for a new site, which left us about nine of them. And then we again tried to just keep narrowing down our focus on what all those parcels offered for potential. And some of the, the main reasons for removing the majority of those were that they weren't in or sufficiently close to the main corridor. And we had identified the main corridor as the Main Street Newport Road main way right through town. So that was what we called the main corridor. Some of those properties that we had eliminated were too close to or within an established residential area. And/or the owner of the property had stated that the parcel wouldn't be for sale to the town. So those were some of the reasons that we were able to narrow down those, those thirty-two to about nine of them. In subsequent meetings, we determined that the owners of some of the properties had no interest again in selling at this time to the town. And it was also determined that the owner at the time, it was determined that the owner of the crescenti property wouldn't subdivide out a smaller parcel of that large piece behind Hanaford to the town. And also the committee added another proposal from one of the members to consider the Academy Building Town Offices as a possible site. Perhaps moving that either closer to the front of the road. So at that point, we were down to seven parcels, which again, we kept trying to dig down a little bit deeper into each one. So then we developed a means to evaluate each property and compare them to that list of preferred characteristics that I had mentioned before. And it included a system which gave some insight into each site's qualification. But importantly, it established some pros and cons related to each site. The Subcommittee did recognize that a pro to one person might be a con to another. So we tried to keep a healthy respect of that. This resulted in us removing a few more properties. And so finally, we were, we were drilled down to three parcels, the three sites remaining for consideration. And those were the Beulie site, the Beulie site, which is essentially across from Hanaford and the post office. The Broome site, which is between Sugar River Bank and Bar Harbor Bank. Those were identified as the primary sites for consideration and then the crescenti site as a secondary site for consideration. And there are several attachments here that are referenced in this final report that are certainly available. This is all already available on the town website for folks to look at if they wish. And then there were a list of other considerations that the Subcommittee recognized but didn't necessarily drill down on to at this point, at this point in the game. Because they, we thought it was outside the scope of our purview, which was really just to come to the Board with a list of sites that we thought would meet the need and would be a possibility. So that's in another attachment. And so the, the Board can certainly see as, as we went through the lists of the pros and cons and, and all that, I can certainly go through that for the Board. It might be a bit lengthy, but it's, it's to your, your pleasure. Unless there are some other members of the Subcommittee that want to speak at this point and fill in anything I may have missed.
Are there any specific questions from the Board? Members? Does anyone from the Subcommittee wish to add anything at this point? Joe Cardillo?
Thank you, Joe Cardillo. Member of the Subcommittee and the former Building and Facilities Committee. As we work through this process, different individuals were tasked with staying in contact with owners of these three specific parcels. So information was flowing back and forth with regard to specific information that they might pass along, cost of the land and other information. So after the BFC was dissolved and essentially the Subcommittee was dissolved, I did receive one other piece of information from the owners of the Beulie land. Mike Black, the representative from Continuum, reached out to me. We know that that property finally did transfer. They've taken ownership of it. They had it under agreement for years. And Mike is preparing to take it to market. So as a side note, I have no idea what the Selectmen's intent is moving forward. We've seen efforts in the past to get parcels in front of this town for a vote at town meeting. And you know, this is the first time we've had a site selection committee that spent significant time with this process. So the information I'm getting from Mike is he has all the studies, wetlands, tapos. He just did, redid the wetlands mapping, surveys, et cetera. And he's gathered all that information because he's prepared to go back out to market and sell it. You know, this is me speaking personally now. My thought is after conversations with Kim Hawquist on, on how we can possibly move forward and get to in front of the voters with a vote. That some of the owners, and this is up to the Selectmen now, to engage with these owners. And you'll, you'll be able to discover what their appetite is to move forward with the town. But with regards to the Beulie land, which had a lot of high marks on the Committee because it was a vacant piece of land and pretty accessible. It's sounding like unless the town is willing to put it under agreement prior to a town meeting, it may not ever get presented to the town. The town does have an ability to put it under contract and we have a seller who is willing to live with the contingency that the contract would be contingent on a town vote. So we have not been able, and this was a parcel that was considered in the past, but we never tied it up. And we tried to get the town to vote on it for $500,000 without identifying the site. And it really felt like going through this process, the town has no appetite for buying a pig in a poke, not knowing where something's going to be built. So we have to be, in my opinion, pretty clear on what we're going to put in front of the voters to have a chance, which includes the site, perhaps an acquisition cost on that site, a building plan with an estimated cost, what we do with the buildings that will be left vacant, et cetera. So the information I just recently received is he's preparing to move forward. But he's certainly going to leave a window of time open to speak with the Selectmen if there is interest with them, interest for the Selectmen to pursue this site.
Thanks, Joe. Any questions or comments relative to that?
I have just one more. I won't speak on behalf of the whole Subcommittee at this point because our, our report speaks for itself. But as the Chief of Police, I would be, I think that the Beulie property would be a worthwhile endeavor for the Board to, to put your attention to. The other two sites had, had some considerations and some concerns. Price being one of them, size being one of them. But I do think that the Beulie property checks a lot of boxes for the police department going forward. And I see that as a worthwhile endeavor for you to look further into.
Yeah, Emily had a question. You had mentioned earlier that crescenti is not willing to subdivide, but maybe I misunderstood. I thought Beulie and the Broome and crescenti were the three that you mentioned. Is that right?
Yes. Yep. The Beulie and the Broome, the Subcommittee identified as primary sites for consideration.
Right.
And the crescenti one, because the information that we'd had at the time was that they weren't in a position looking to subdivide it at that time. So that's why it was identified as a secondary, secondary site for consideration.
Has that changed with crescenti?
I have not had any conversations personally.
So one question I'd have is what, if there's a contingency, I assume if we put a binder on, on the Beulie property, what, how much would we lose in the event? I know you don't have an answer, but what, how much would we lose would be financially if we put some kind of contingents on that? Because I'm assuming that would come up at the March meeting. So that leaves the Broome property as the only property? Assuming we don't put a binder on, is that correct?
I don't know if it's accurate. And certainly other members of the Subcommittee feel free to chime in to help answer that. But I don't know that it leaves it as the only one. Those were identified as the primary ones that the Board might want to take a look at. But I think at some point you have to figure in cost and what those are, are looking like. And the Broome property was going to be quite a bit more expensive than the Beulie property was. So we talked about cost at our, at our meetings, but at this point, we were more focused on trying to identify which sites were going to meet the need. And while cost is certainly always, I think, a topic of conversation, it wasn't our primary focus for the Subcommittee.
Right. But, but as we stand tonight, Broome would be the only?
We'd be looking at Broome afterwards, I suppose. That was one of the sites that the Subcommittee identified if Beulie didn't materialize.
Correct. And in regard to Beulie, if we go ahead, an attachment E, what numbers do you have from the Subcommittee so we can address attachment E, which I think deals with, you know, deals with costs, deals with feasibility, construction, renovations and site? And I'm just thinking of the overall cost. Originally, when we discussed this, as I remember, an issue was taxes and what would it cost?
Sure.
And I, I remember a figure of $280 per resident, permanent resident owns property. What would that be?
I don't know.
Who will present those numbers?
Sure. Yep, absolutely. I don't know if that 280, maybe that was from the Myers study from 2020. I'm not sure where the 280 came from. I don't know. But the Subcommittee did not get any numbers in terms of cost of renovation, feasibility, because again, we felt that, well, that's certainly an important thing to consider. At this point, we were really just focused in on trying to identify a site. And so, you know, the cost of construction has certainly changed. If this had happened a few years ago, I probably could have made some calls around the state of New Hampshire and seen what some other departments had cost to build. But those numbers are old, even if it was done six months ago now. So we don't have any, any numbers in terms of cost of renovation, construction, site prep. We, we didn't get any of that for this Subcommittee.
And, and then I'll, last question, would we get some of those answers for attachment E before the Selectmen have to make a decision on binding?
The Subcommittee hasn't been tasked with that. So I guess I would defer to the Board on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
It is a good question, John. And as you notice at the top, under attachment E, it does states that these are topics that the Committee believes weren't for the consideration. So none of those numbers were procured as Chief Cobb mentioned in the study and the work that the Subcommittee did in identifying a piece of property. So we have a come, a hand over here. Then Renata. And then Lindsay.
Lieutenant David Keith with the Police Department. I'm also a town resident. I just want to thank everyone for their participation in the Subcommittee. I've learned a lot. They all taught me a lot. As a resident, I feel that I also obviously agree with Chief Cobb. I feel the Beulie property, it's seven acres. It's, it's a lot of land, but it's also a lot of land for the town. It's, you know, in the future, it could lend to dry storage for emergency management or other storage opportunities that the town may need, which obviously is an issue. So it's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Renata in the back?
Thank you. I have a question to the Subcommittee. Are they aware of, on the Beulie property, there was a appraisal done by the state? And if I'm correct, it was initiated by New London. And I'd like to know if the Subcommittee, if they know about this report, if they have read it. Because what I have in front of me, I have a copy of that report and it came from the state and an expert of the wetlands. And it does not agree with what I've heard so far. So it was done in 2018 when there was the first interest on that property. So can somebody answer that?
My name is Peter Hoagland. I'm a resident of town. I'm on the Subcommittee and I am not aware of any assessment or anything that had, that was done on the property. Thank you. Not aware of it.
Hey Lindsay?
I'll defer while they debate this. Maybe Joe knows more than I do.
Let's let Joe.
Renata, I'm not sure what you've got in hand, but as we went through the process, we did discover that in 2018, in a non-public session, Selectmen at that time wanted to pursue this land. We were, those minutes were just released at the same time as we were going through the Subcommittee report. At that time, we did find that there was an appraisal that was ordered by the town of New London. And I believe it was Capital Appraisals out of Concord. So this report for the state of New Hampshire never came, unless it's, it's, unless this is done by Capital Appraisals, never, never came before us. If, this one could be very different. But we did eventually share an appraisal that was ordered by the town. No, this is the same one, Capital Appraisals. It just has a state. It just has his state of New Hampshire appraisal certification on the back. That's just showing that he's certified. So this, this is an appraisal that was done for the town of New London by Capital Appraisals. And it came in at, you know, $75,000 or something. At that time, the land was being offered for 500,000. It did talk about wetlands. We're, we're fully aware that there's wetlands issues there. So the full cost is what the Selectmen have to find out, what will it cost to remediate the wetlands? You know, I, I'm not sure everyone on the Subcommittee saw the appraisal. I did see it. It was available. It's online now. So if, if the Board wasn't familiar with it, they, or the Committee, they should have been. Just to address one question that John made about how much money would we have at risk if we're tying up the Beulie land? That comes down to how good the Selectmen are at negotiating. My sense, my feeling is we, we might not have to have anything at risk, that we could make it purely contingent on, on it being voted on. That, that was the sense I got from the seller, that he's willing to work with the town. So, but it, that'll be in the hands of the Selectmen at the time. So Renata, was your concern that it only came in at 75,000 or something, or that it? Right? Right?
Driveway to get in and out of that property because it's right over wetlands. So it's, and the opinion of this report is that even if the state gives you all those permissions to go ahead, it would be at a considerable cost to do all the right things and which would shrink the property even less than two acres. So I just think it's worth looking into. And before, you know, people vote on it and then it doesn't turn out to be, or the cost is going to go up building there. So I'm just want to be, you know, looking ahead and want the Board to be aware of that.
I think you raised a fair point. I'm sorry, Nancy. My bad.
It took me a minute to figure out who was speaking. Sorry.
All right. And then we'll go to Bill because Bill had his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I think you raised some very fair points and those are listed in, in the cons, if you will, of, of the Beulie property. Recognizing that there are some wetlands issues that we'll have to contend with, which might affect the placement of the building or the driveway placement. So certainly those are things that the Subcommittee did consider, but you raise a fair point.
Bill, did you want to say something before?
Yeah, I thought that it would just be useful to, for everybody's benefit to set the record completely straight about what happened in 2017 and 18. At that time, the Board of Selectmen was made up of the same three people that you see sitting here today. And on November 27th and again on December 5th in 2017, the Selectmen met in non-public session, which they're allowed to do under state statute when discussing the purchase of property. And at that time, we present, were presented with seven different pieces of property that the town might be interested in. And it was the sense of the Board of Selectmen at that time, as reflected in the minutes, that it would be useful if we had the funds available to buy that land. And so at the town meeting in March of 2018, we requested from the town $350,000 to fund the purchase of land or to get control of land, if you, if you will, for one of several different sites, one of which was the so-called Beulie land. It's now owned by Continuum Health Services and doing business as New London Place. At the town meeting in 2018, the town voted not to support the bond to give us the money to be able to acquire this land or any of the other six properties that were being looked at because it was the census, Joe Cardillo has said that the town did not want to give the Selectmen the flexibility of, of having that money and making those decisions without a town meeting vote on the specific property and the specific use of it. And so at that point, the issue of land acquisition went on the back burner, I guess, and has only come back now in the last several months. And as Chief Cobb has said, the process began again with the Subcommittee in November of 2021. So that's what's transpired from 2017 to 2021.
Okay, Lindsay?
Lindsay Lund Harkins. I, I always appreciate the clarification of how things arrive to a certain point. And I just hope that going forward, we can take some of these issues like the 2018 vote that wouldn't let us have funds to acquire a property because it wasn't specifically named. And to Mr. Cardillo's, you know, credit, there is a, there is a potential owner that is willing to negotiate with the town in a free market environment. And that's what I wish, you know, we wouldn't get caught so much into the rhetoric of our process of buying property and realize that we are still buying it from a person who is in the market to make a profit. And so if there is a, such a seller that is willing to go under an agreement with the town, I would, it would behoove us to investigate that quite thoroughly, even if, you know, the deposit money in earnest for a $500,000, $700,000 property is 20 to five to $40,000, that's one more study to tell us that the police department is not adequate, is not housing an adequate facility at this point. We have to go forward at this point too. And I understand the wetlands piece of the puzzle, but on that point as well, we fund conservation through this, you know, through this town. And it almost seems like dual purpose. The police department or the police building probably wouldn't need more than two acres to build upon. And then you have five additional acres of wetlands. That would be under the town, you know, ownership and property to use as they see fit and/or protect. So I do think that we have to be a little bit more open-minded. I've lived in Florida for a brief time. Don't do that. And there is no such thing as wetlands because the entire place is wet. You have to remediate water. And we're kind of in that same instance here in New London. We're on a peak and everything was built on Main Street that we could. And everything that goes off to either side goes into wetlands. And so very, I'm very, very, very cognizant of preservation, but we also have to work with both sides of the story here.
You had mentioned that in your article, you needed at least two acres. And as I understand it, Beulie will have, Beulie will have less than two acres. Is that right? I mean, to develop from, according to the report that was just read in 2018. So I would hope we look into that. The other, the other comment that was made was that we would be able to use the additional, assuming we use two acres, the additional five acres. And what is the cost of, of upgrading it so it could be useful? That is, the other five acres would be, I hope we're putting into consideration the, that future cost of the, of the renovation of, of the entire seven, if we're going to buy it with the intent of future use for the town. But I think some of these things, the cost and the expense need to be considered, even if we're going to put a down payment on that property. What's the cost to build on that property? I think we need to know that before we proceed.
Okay, thank you, John. John McKenna, and then we'll go back to Lindsay.
I'm confused. Is it the seven acre piece of Beulies or the four acre piece? The seven?
The, the seven acre piece, so yeah.
On County Road?
Nope, no, on Newport Road. So it's the piece that's directly across from Hanaford and essentially the post office. It's between Abut's Hilltop Place the driveway to Hilltop, I guess.
I guess, what is the, my question is, what is the point of the Subcommittee then?
I guess, what is the, my question is, what is the point of the subcommittee then? Was it to identify and parcel out every acre of a property? Or was it for the police department, a future police department site?
It was to identify possible sites that would be a feasible place for the police department to be. We didn't look at building placement on any site anywhere. We didn't look at building design. We, we, one area that we did look into was tower feasibility for our communications tower. And so I had asked our communications vendor, Beltronics, to do a, a look at all few different properties. And the Beulie, Crescenti, and a few others were among those. And it would definitely work there, that tower. Because the tower that's housed at the police department needs to be able to reach certainly Mount Kearsarge, where we currently have equipment, and then Mount Sunapee, where we hope to have equipment within the next six months to a year, which we're still waiting on that grant agreement, by the way.
So while I have the mic, correct me if I'm wrong though, how many other sites are we, you know, trying to look for with subcommittees for potential development for another building?
None that I'm aware of. I think it was really just the police department that we were looking at for town municipal development. Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so it was not within the scope of the committee to decide what to do with the other several acres that you didn't need for the actual building and your purpose?
Correct. Our, our job was to identify possible sites for a police department.
Okay, if there's another comment. Will's getting his workout.
Kate Hale, I was just wondering if the broom property also could accommodate that tower?
Yes, that was on the list that we had asked. That there were no, and I can pull up the four that we had asked for. We had asked Beltronics to look at 176 Newport Road, which is generally the location of the, what is 170? That's the broom property, correct, subcommittee members? Thank you, okay. 176 Newport Road, 198 Main Street, which is the Bonanno property, which we did not have as one of our final sites to consider. The Beulie property, the Crescenti property, and then our current location. And all of those were feasible sites for a tower, a communications tower to be. And depending on which site it, it landed at, the height of that tower might make a difference just due to the elevation of the actual site and the, the lines of sight from that tower to the two mountains. So the tower might be taller at one site than at another, but it just depends on elevation.
Okay, comments from the board?
I have no more at this point. Thank you. I, I guess I would say, and I've said this several times to the committee and to others, that I think the committee did an excellent job of scoping out the possibilities. The number of properties of adequate size along Main Street and Newport Road are very, very limited. And I think they did an excellent job of, with what they had to work with.
Yeah, I want to echo and thank the subcommittee for all of the work that you did on this. I know there were a number of meetings and there was a number of sites that you visited and pretty lengthy discussions to put together this final report. So thank you. Is there one other comment?
Hi, Paul Vance, I'm on the planning board and I was a member of the subcommittee. I'd like to thank Bill and, and the rest of the selectmen for thanking us for the work. And as Emily has said, I think that the report speaks for what the subcommittee did and, and lays out all of, as best we can, the pros and cons of the three sites. I think the focus that people have had on Statement E is very meaningful. This, this was beyond the scope. The things that we listed on Schedule E intentionally were beyond the scope of what the subcommittee was doing. And with respect to the questions that have been raised about Beulie, we did, as representatives of the committee, met with the Beulie people. They actually cited a potential site for it. They recognized there's wetlands. We spoke about wetlands with our zoning administrators and, and people. So we know there's a problem there. I think some work needs to be done, certainly before, before a contract is signed. But the work is going to, you know, be expensive or is going to cost money. As to broom, which was brought up, there is an existing building on broom. It, it is, I think, 1.4 acres. We did not do any work, as we said, we didn't do any work on that building in terms of its use or adaptation to a police department. Obviously, the price that's been bandied about on a per acre basis is substantially more than either of the other parcels. And as to Crescenti, we thought it was reasonable to ask if they were going to be willing to subdivide in the interest of the town to be able to cite a police station. They declined. But I think should be pointed out to the people here that purely on a per acre basis, the Crescenti property is cheaper than either of the other ones. That doesn't mean that they have the same value per acre or anything like that. But it, cost was not something that we actively had on our list in terms of looking at the sites. So I think from my standpoint, that brings you up to date. I would especially go back and mention Attachment E and the, and the work that would need to be done.
Thank you, Paul. And we'll certainly need to take that into consideration as we continue our conversation about this within the board. So if there's no other comments and nothing from my colleagues, I'll move us forward. Jakes, here Butterbean, give us an update on the ARPA funding request.
Yeah, I'm Ken Jakes. I am not chairman of the Board of the Commissioners this year, but I'm still a commissioner. Jimmy's the chairman, but I started this process in actively seeking the ARPA funds and I'd like to complete it. Question for Kim. I got an email that we were asked to come to this meeting and I just wanted to clarify why I'm, what I'm doing here and I'll be able to address any of it.
Yes, thanks for coming, Ken. I did bump you up to number two, so I did the best I could.
I have another meeting tonight. That'd be great.
Yes, the selectmen are going to start talking about ARPA funds and the dedication of those funds to various groups, water, sewer, and whatever else we want to do.
So I don't need a deposit bag tonight? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So if you could at least, you know, let the selectmen know where you are with the project, that kind of thing. I think they'll at least in broad strokes be able to come to some conclusion as to where the funding will go.
Okay, so just a quick recap. We are constantly searching for money and have had very little success. Every grant we apply for, we get nixed on. And the state doesn't understand why. I don't understand why. They don't have an answer why. But it always seems as though, well, you're in compliance and the other people aren't. So I'm almost thinking we'd be better off to do nothing, then maybe we'd get some money. But that seems to be not our job. Started looking at the Main Street project and that really was the catalyst for applying for grants. So we didn't get any grants. And one of the comments that came to us was, you know, there's ARPA money out there. And the first identified feature of the ARPA is water infrastructure. And I believe it's about 36% of the ARPA funds were slated for that. And so I wanted to know how to get my hands on that. And I was told that, well, you have to go to the town because the town gets the money. And in more discussions with the state, they were surprised that we had to go to the town. I said, well, you're the ones putting out the money. How, you ought to be able to figure out what you're doing. And they were just here again this week for, we had a sanitary survey and the guy said, oh, no, you can just apply for the money. I said, no, it goes to the towns. He called back yesterday and, oh, you're right, you have to go through the town. So anyway, that's, that's our leadership. What I'm just going to say is what I said in the past. If there's, we know some of that money slated for water infrastructure. If we could get any of that money, we'd be more than appreciative. We'd be very appreciative at 36.1%, which was what it was allocated for. I'm going to give you a list. I brought four copies. I didn't know this was big. I didn't even know the meeting was here. So I've been riding around town. Could you give that to each of them? Thank you. And there's one for Kim there. And I'll just go down through those quickly. And if you have a question on them, that'd be great. So we are currently in the process of, and you probably saw the survey is on Main Street, the design of the water main replacement on Main Street. That's the $87,000 project, $87,800. That money was raised this year through taxes. And, you know, if we get anything to offset that, that'd be great. Along with that, we put a warrant article in that was, and I, I think the selectmen know that. I mentioned it before and I mentioned it at planning board meetings. Water supply evaluation, we had some discussion with Adam Ricker about it. We're starting to look at where we might need, have the ability to get our hands on more water for the precinct. And some of that came from the zoning changes that were made at this year's meeting. Because that really increased the, the amount of water that might be needed from the inside out for us. We put $30,000 towards that and we're getting a scope from the engineer now. We'll probably embark on that later this year. Asset management continuation, $50,000. That was a 50/50. We, we raised half of that and the state applied half of that to it. We're not done with it, but we're very close. We've done all the legwork, had the final meeting with the state. And what, what that is essentially, it tells us what we own and where it is. So it's, in, in the short answer is it's a lot of GIS stuff, gets everything off paper and onto a computer. Main Street replacement preliminary estimate, 3.7. I have no idea where that's going to come in. It could be much more than that. Things cost a lot more. I know Duck the Lion right now is eight months out. And so I don't know how you're even going to bid this, but we'll find out. This is the idea, what we're looking for. It's a multimillion dollar project to do Main Street. It's probably going to be phased in over more than one year. But we'll see what happens when we get the engineering and design done. You know, there's always fun things from the state. Morgan Pond Dam upgrade. So the precincts own this dam since the 1920s. And it's been there and it's been modified a little bit, hasn't been made any higher. It has gate valves to it and a sluice way. We can regulate the amount of water in and out of the pond and what goes into the old reservoirs. So right now, all it's doing is feeding Little Sunapee. Well, the state's decided to upgrade that to a, a higher risk. And a wild guess is $60,000 to fix the dam. And we had a conversation with the engineers that were here for the sanitary survey the other day because they told me that the water that comes down from Morgan Pond that goes into the old reservoirs, they used to feed the system, can't be used as an emergency source. So my next question was, well, what do I need a dam for? Which I don't need a dam. And we're going to have a, we have the meeting on the 13th with the dam bureau to find out exactly what they're talking about, why the risk has gone up so dramatically. So that's kind of in limbo. I don't, that just came out of the blue and we're going to deal with it. If I have a way to eliminate the liability of the dam, I'm going to do that. And then 2024 service inventory preliminary, preliminary estimate, $100,000. This is a thank you to Flint, Michigan. You all saw that on the news, what went on there with the lead in the system. And they did some little backdoor stuff to get water in. It wasn't really copacetic to the users. The new rule reads that we have to, we can't tell them that we know there's no lead in the system, even though we pass all the copper and lead rules. We have to prove that there's no lead in the system. Which means if, for example, I want to go to Nancy's house and I know that, I don't, I'm not sure what's in the ground feeding her house. I may have to dig it up to verify what's there, which seems crazy. And right now, we know of half of the properties in town what they are. But the other half, we're trying to cross-reference it and see. We've got a couple of years to try to figure it out. But, you know, again, more money that just, you don't have. So this is a list of the things that are in front of us. The, the first thing that's in front of us is the Main Street project. And that's what we're going to continue on. This Board of Commissioners has been together for quite a while and we'd like to see this come to fruition. We have no debt right now, so we're in a position to incur debt. We've paid off all of Colby Point, Colby Point Pump Station, Tank in the Woods, Tank at Colby Sawyer, all the water main upgrades we did on County Road, the rotary down headed towards Jimmy's. South Pleasant Streets all paid off, Pine Hills all paid off. So we're in a position to try to go after and get the Main Street project done. And anything that we could get to help with that, I would not say no to. And I, I, I have answers for anything that you could ask. You know, we're immersed in this stuff. Even though we only meet once a month, I see that superintendent twice a day. So that's what I know, which isn't much.
Questions? Bill?
Ken, what, where, where do you stand with Springfield in terms of these same discussions?
Well, Springfield didn't get hardly any money, first of all. And it seems unlikely that the town of Springfield, which has about 30 users in it, most of which are Twin Lake Villa, would allocate money for the main trunk going through New London. And I can tell you, they spent their ARPA funds to bring internet to the town. You probably saw that on the news, the governor made a big show of it. There were places in town, these kids got out of school. There was no school to go to and they didn't have internet. Springfield is fairly removed. So I, I don't believe there's any money to be had there. I think they were allocated $87,000 or $107,000, but I, I don't, don't quote me on that.
Thank you. I was asking the question because frequently we get questions about, well, there's other towns involved in what you're doing. Are they contributing? So.
Yeah, it's such a small portion of the precinct. I mean, it really is small. It's, there's, I believe, 30 users. I think 20 of them are TLV and the balance of them are, you know, up by the old Hideaway Lodge, which are not part of TLV, but they are Springfield properties. So.
Ken, it might be helpful to say how water usage is charged to individuals in the town of New London.
Okay, so water is charged to individ, two ways. Everybody who is in the precinct gets a, an assessment on their tax bill. Whether you own property in the precinct or you live in the precinct, when you look at your tax bill, you're going to see water precinct tax. Since about 1993, two, it's been around a dollar per thousand. And it may have fluctuated to a dollar 12 and it may have gone to 72, but it's been around a dollar per thousand. That's been by design. And that's been to try to defray the debt of capital projects. Now, there are also monies raised through water user rates. So if you have a piece of property and you live on that piece of property or rental property or business, whatever it may be, you have a water meter and that water meter generates a number. And twice a year, you are sent a bill. There's a minimum amount of water. For a typical residential, I believe it's $59 for 10,000 gallons of water. And then everything over and above that, you're billed on a per thousand basis. And that's, that probably brings in around 240,000, 180 to 240,000 dollars a year, depending on how dry the year is. That's really the, the factor that, that changes everything. Other than that, those are the two numbers that, that are, that affect people as far as monies coming into the precinct. So just an idea, we run around 600, 600,000, 650,000 dollar budget a year. 200, let's just say 250,000 of that comes in from water rates. The balance is raised through taxes.
And then also, isn't it true that the amount of usage in New London has decreased with the middle school moving out of town?
Well, compared to what? Compared to 1995, when we started the project? No.
Okay.
So the water has not gone up at the, the water usage has not gone up at a, at the same rate that we would have anticipated when we sat down in the mid 90s to figure out where the, and you know how that is. This is what I think is going to happen in 20 years. So good luck with that, if you don't know. And nobody that was at. And nobody that was at that meeting was even close. So things happened in New London, and I think I'd mentioned that before. You did have, you had a few things. And the big one, middle school was one big one. That's five flushes per kid per day, ten thousand gallons or more, twenty thousand maybe. That's a major amount of water, and nobody anticipated that going to Sutton. But it did. The other thing really that, 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 two things that had a major effect. One was Osman Sargent gobbled up a bunch of land in the precinct that did not allow for development. So that's certainly helpful. That's non-developable land, developable land, or they picked up the development rights, which is essentially the same. The other thing, though, is, and you all know this, that the town took over the sewer department. You don't have a sewer commission, came under your public works. And I know for a fact, because we got a lot of phone calls on it, that the sewer rates went up dramatically when that took place. And when that took place, people's sewer rates went up, and like everything else, follow the money. Now I need to know where all my water is going, because I'm paying for it. And so people in general started cutting back. But more importantly, your two major consumers in town, the hospital and the college, decided that they needed to start cutting back. So they removed most of their fixtures, put in low-flow units, as much conservation measures as they could. That has a dramatic effect. And, you know, it's, you can't get them to do that by putting in, you should conserve water in the annual report every year. People don't care about that. They care about two things. Turning the faucet on, make sure the water comes out. And they care about how much money they're writing for a check to the sewer department or to the water precinct. That's human nature. And so those are the things that have affected. So if you would have said in nineteen ninety two, well, boy, by the year two thousand and twenty, we're going to be needing a new water source right away, and we're going to be up around five hundred thousand gallons of water a day. That was a possibility. But that's nowhere near where we are. We're probably closer to that three hundred thousand gallons, three hundred thousand gallons a day. And that would have been up from two, two and a quarter back in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety five, somewhere, when Colby Point started.
Thank you.
So.
So Ken, so the current Main Street project, your preliminary estimate is three point seven.
So that was thrown out roughly a year ago.
Right.
By the engineer. And it was, he hadn't done any of this engineering design or any of that. So we are in the process of that right now. They've done all their calculations on Main Street. They're trying to put it into a report so we can see what we actually have and what we're going to put out to bid. What's their recommendation on how you put it out to bid? You know, and right now, with everything costs more, I could be talked into wait in two years. I don't know.
Yeah, that was my next question relative. When do you see the report being completed?
Oh, the reports this year. We'll have it before, by the end of the year, by December.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
I hope that's helpful and
It is helpful.
You call me at home at night, early. I go to bed early.
And shut the tap off. All right. Thanks, Ken. Up, one question here. I think we have one question.
Hi, thanks. Russ Moore from the New London Bike Walk Coalition. I just want to mention that this is going to be a major infrastructure project that's going to involve certainly creating a major disruption of the road for a period of time. And that I think it's a really good opportunity for the select board and for the town to look at Main Street more globally in terms of the traffic congestion, the parking, the pedestrian access, the biking access. I know that Adam is going to be working on a corridor study that focuses on, you know, economic viability of downtown, traffic congestion, parking. But obviously, this is a major infrastructure project, and I don't know how all these things will align, but I think it's an important kind of historic opportunity for the town to really look at how we can create a Main Street that is aesthetically pleasing, that is safe for motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians. And that separate from the cost that might be involved in that, I think it's, it would be a wise use of funds to just do some kind of high-level preliminary engineering assessment of what other kinds of things the town could do to, to address these other concerns.
Thank you for your comments, Russ. Okay, and nothing else on this topic? Thanks, Ken. I guess you can make your other meeting. Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Coogan, Rotary Club.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jerry Coogan, and I'm the chair of the New London Rotary Fundraising Committee. And with me is Judy Shone, who's the president of the Rotary Club for New London. As you, as you may remember, we had a very successful food truck festival in twenty nineteen. We had about one thousand four hundred people attend. We had very positive reviews from it. But we worked in cooperation with the full-time recreation director for New London to put that together, and that person was very helpful. We don't have that particular person available today. But we have planned the Food Truck Festival Family Fun Day for July the third. We have some information about it that's on the website. And it's going to be a family fun day with food trucks, a beer tent, music. We're going to have a drummer, Julie Corey, if you know her. Then we're going to have Peabody Cold Train Band, which is a bluegrass and country. And then we're going to have a skit from the Bar and Playhouse. So this is going to be a very nice community event, something we haven't done in maybe two and a half years. It's going to be similar to the Winter Carnival, the Pumpkin Fest, Strawberry Festival, and other events. And as you recall, when the discussion about the full-time director was had a couple of years ago, there was a transition from full-time to part-time, but there were funds of it made available for community recreation programs. So we have a proposal before you for some funding to help us offset, offset some of the direct costs for the Family Fun Day. And we feel that the use of those funds would be an excellent application for the Family Fun Day. The Recreation Commission reviewed this proposal last week and has recommended it. And I'm here today just to share this information with you and try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Okay. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I think, I think we should take a vote on this and we should give Rotary six thousand three hundred and five dollars, although I should say that I am in Rotary. And I will recuse myself if you all feel that's appropriate.
I don't think you benefit from this.
Not individually, no.
I'll move that we allocate six thousand three hundred dollars to the said endeavor coming out of the Recreation Activity Fund.
Okay, I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We hope you all can attend the event, and we look forward to that day. Thank you.
Okay, I believe under public comments, we have Liz Miller. That's what I have of my written in comment from the
Joy, Joy Cubit says you'll be addressing the request for the proclamation.
Okay, it's all you. So there you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am addressing the proclamation, which I have forgotten about. So I hope you will help me, Kim. Joy is out of town.
Yep, this is a proclamation for Plastic Pollution Reduction Month, which will be the entire month of July twenty twenty two. And it supports
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
And I think it does. We've met, I met with Liz and Joy Cubit. Now that I've refreshed your memory, should I let you take it?
Oh, well, it's, this is a great opportunity for us to look around and see what we're doing about our plastics, how we could reduce some of them. There's a number of people that are here tonight who have made great effort to, to reduce their plastic already. And I was at, for instance, I was at Sweet Beet, which is over in Bradford, Darling Cafe the other day, and they handed me this plastic container. And they said, I said, well, I don't really want that. We can't recycle that in New London. And they said, oh, this is compostable. I said, well, we don't do that in New London either. So I think that we can really look to see what we're doing with our plastics, how we can improve on them, and how we can look into composting more of our food scraps as well.
Thank you, Liz. So in addition to the proclamation, which I assume will go on our website and probably be noted in municipal matters. Are you planning any special activities in terms of your group? Or if you want to defer that until the next meeting, when your colleagues may return, that's fine.
My colleague, who is the, yeah. We do have flyers that I'm going to be putting up, which tells us and gives some suggestions about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I wanted to say, with regard to the recent tragedy in Texas, with the schoolchildren being murdered, I wanted to note and thank our police chief because after that happened, she was at New London Middle School greeting everyone of our middle, our elementary school students when they came to school. And I just thought, what a nice thing for our kids to see that police actually do care. And we'll be there for them. So thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate that, and I'll appreciate you knocking about ten years off my life too, because it wasn't me, but it was Officer Welch.
Oh, okay. I was misinformed then.
Yes, but, but I'll take it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Liz, for the classic proclamation.
Can I go back?
Yeah. I think we need to vote, too. That's just where I thought we were going there for a moment.
I will move that we make, assign the proclamation as presented to us.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Old business, we have the Whipple Hall project planning. Bill, would you like to start with that?
Phil, you going to come up and help us with this? Or going to bring your committee up or whatever? As we've discussed in the last couple of meetings, we're trying to get the Whipple Hall project off and off and running. We've approved the hiring of Frank Anzalone as an architect and consultant on this. And Phil and the subcommittee have presented us with a couple of pages of suggestions of things we need to, to work on. And at the last meeting, I believe, we decided that the, I think Nancy, you volunteered to be the point on this as soon as I can possibly slip out from doing this. But, but I think what we agreed to do tonight was to answer just a couple of questions. The first one was, is this a project that is going to be good for the decades ahead? Or are we simply trying to meet the current functional needs? So that's the first question for us to try to consider and give some guidance to the committee on. And the second question was whether or not we thought we would be doing this project all in one fell swoop, or whether we'd be dividing it into several smaller projects over some period of time. I personally had thought that when we passed the six hundred thousand dollar bond, it was with the intent of trying to do it once and, once and for all. And then we also agreed in the interim, Phil supplied us with the first report of the facilities management work that's been going on with the committee and with Bob Harrington and with Pete Hoagland. And we agreed that, to Phil and I, thought that the best place to start with this particular document would be to talk specifically about capital project management. Because after all, what we're talking about with Whipple Hall is a major capital project. And so the issues, particularly on page four of this document on the facilities management plan, talk about what we need to do to understand the functions of the owner's representative. And so that's sort of my introduction to this, and I guess we probably can easily talk among ourselves about the question of whether this is a short-term or a long-term fix, and also whether or not we intend to do it all at once or to spread it out over, over time. And then we can turn to Phil perhaps and Colin and Rip to talk about owner, owner representation and project management. So I think I've already stated my thought that we were going to do this all at once, that we have passed a bond issue, and the town has spoken in that regard. But I think we need to either affirm that or change it. And I, I personally believe that all of the elements of the plan as outlined for the town meeting and in subsequent documents that the committee has given us should be pursued, except for the balcony. I do not believe that we should be working on the balcony. And I think time alone will tell about the air conditioning and heating situation, because that's going to require some engineering work and some answers to come back to us. But I believe all the other elements from furniture to lighting, to acoustics, to treatment of the ceiling should be included in the project at this time.
I agree with that. I really don't have a statement with regards to the balcony. But yes, when we began this scope relative to setting up Whipple Hall, it was certainly to complete those tasks that were identified for the town warrant that we passed this past March. And we need to proceed. Now, whether or not that gets staged, I think will depend on supply and chain issues and all sorts of other things, which have already been grossly delayed. I myself have been waiting for a new couch since last November. So I certainly know what the supply chain issues are. And I guess I'd like to hear more about the, why not proceed with the I know we don't want to do the air conditioning right now. We want to see how things settle in. But whether or not the balcony is an issue, depending on what we want to do. I also think that a ten-year plan at this point is just not feasible. So it's really to set it up for at least the next several years, so it's functional for our needs as the town hall. Those are my thoughts.
I agree with both of you. Again, I, and I've said this before, I don't know whether I need to say it again, but I'm not invested in doing the balcony. I don't think it's, I don't think we need it, and I don't think it's a safe place to have the public going up and down those stairs. So I would not be in favor of doing anything with the balcony.
Okay, so have we sufficiently
Well, I think I hear a sort of, not maybe all in the same place in terms of if this is a multi-decade project or, as you just said, Nancy, making it functional for the next several, several years. So I think that's maybe we need to clarify that. I didn't hear quite what Janet said about that. And I, I said, I thought we were trying to do it once and for all. So I think we should
Well, once and for all with the six hundred thousand dollars. I think there's certainly other things that could be done. I don't want to guesstimate what a ten-year plan would look like for Whipple Hall.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I'm not in favor of doing air conditioning. I think that would be enormously expensive. And I don't think it's a good idea with, in that building. So I would just like to see us be able to use it now. Be able to hold meetings there and have the same type of audiovisual equipment that we have right here. I think the screens have been great. I think the panels have helped with the sound. We have our planning board meetings there, and it certainly has made a difference. But I'd like to see those things finished as soon as possible. And I know that there are reasons why it's not because of, again, supply chain issues. So that's where I am. I think that after we get the tables and chairs and all of the basics purchased and built or done, I think then we can have a better understanding of where we are and what we need still to do.
Phil, did you have an additional question? I see you trying to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was going to wait till Janet.
Phil.
Phil, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to put some context on the question. Many of us in construction realize that when there's a river of money going toward a building, it's probably the only river that's ever going to hit that building in our lifetime. That was the only
That was the only reason for that question. We all understand that the balcony is not needed today. Nobody's having meetings of that scale in Whipple Hall. However, um, again, with some bounds on the budget, the question was simply, do we fix it for meetings today? Which would lead us to some of the, the conclusions that had just been talked about. Uh, let me give you an example. Kim rightfully so said, did you include finishing the floor in the budget? Well, that's not a lot of money, but no, it wasn't listed there. On the other hand, if it's just get it done for meetings today, no, we're not going to finish the floor. Finish the floor when you need to finish the floor. If you want to fix that building and pretty much be done with it for now, then we ought to clean it up and finish floors and paint things and so, so on and so forth. That's the only reason that that question was raised. I'm somewhat ambivalent on which of those we choose, but I think we know, we need to know what direction we're going to take. That will then inform what pieces of the puzzle go in and out to a degree. And some of those will have to come back with questions. So that's where that came from anyway.
Bill, as a B?
Yeah, I was going to go back to picking up Janet on the, on the air conditioning. So I, I hear you saying Janet that don't even spend any time trying to figure out whether it makes sense to air condition the building. Let's just, uh, live with the, the, the fans and the windows. Is that accurate?
You know, I don't think it gets hot there in the summer. I'm sorry. I, I don't feel that that's an issue. It has ever been an issue, having gone to a number of meetings, even in August, when it can be really hot. We get a great breeze and if the windows are open, fine. And how many days a year would we need air conditioning? I don't really think we do. And I, I'm, I bow my head to climate change and the fact that the planet is getting warmer, but I don't find that that building is uncomfortable holding meetings there.
Okay. I mean, cause I think that's a, a major sort of piece of direction that we need to, uh, give the committee. Because both in terms of cost and impact on a whole lot of other, um, sort of infrastructure things, you know, running pipes and vents and so on. If we're not interested in doing that, we shouldn't spend the money seeing what it would cost to do it. And it might, uh, significantly, and my, my guess is change the, the scope of the work to be done. But I let the experts tell me I'm wrong.
Well, and Frank Anzalone, you'll recall, had brought up the issue of air conditioning, big heavy brick buildings. And he's not saying you can't do it. And he's not saying it's a good thing to do. He's saying you've got to look at it, uh, that there's condensation and other, other issues to be dealt with. It's a question that's been on the table from day one. There is a school that says, we've been there for a hundred and something years without air conditioning. We don't need it today. There's another school that says, do you want to have the last assembly hall in the town of New London? It's not air conditioned. I don't think it's the temperature of the air. I think it's the tolerance of the people that's changing.
Well, I just, you know, I, I think of issues such as mold.
Right.
And condensation and all of those things. And I really don't feel that that building should be, um, air conditioned.
I, I don't think the decision to air condition it could be made tonight. The decision to whether to have Frank look at it could be made. Because if the answer to that is no, then don't spend the money thinking about it. But if the answer is maybe if we can make it work, then it's worth, you know, doing the analysis and figuring out what that really means.
Rip?
Yeah, I might just add that an air-conditioned building would be closed up. So you don't have as much dirt infiltration from the windows and you don't have noise from the street or whatever that would interrupt meetings. So in today's environment, usually when you're fixing up a building, you're sort of sealing it up and making the, the climate in it more regulated. Because as you said earlier, that's what people expect. So I just would hate to see us spend all this money on Whipple Hall and have it not used because it's hot or because people want air conditioning.
I also believe you can make it a healthier building. If it's feasible, I think it's worth at least taking a look at. I would like to see it as much of this done as possible, including the floor. I mean, if we're spending all this money on the, um, you know, how, how the walls look, um, the noise reduction, the other kinds of things. I mean, I think the building, again, this is our town hall. Um, I'd like to see the investment so that it's, it looks nice, um, and as well as being functional.
Which leads to another part of the same, it's the other side of the same question. 600,000 today doesn't go as far as it did two weeks ago.
Understood. And certainly won't in the fall.
And are we targeting a project that stays within that 600,000? Or are we targeting the project that everyone agrees, uh, at some point, this is the one we want? And then see what it costs and if it's over 600, find other funds.
Bill?
That one's easy for me because I don't want to spend $600,000, but I'm willing to go along with a sense of the, uh, of, of the town. I, I, again, I think the air conditioning piece, air conditioning and heating piece here is the, is the big question that's going to go one, one way or the other though. Because now the, everything else that's on the list, um, I think we, we know we want to do, not, not the balcony. And it's just a matter now of getting the detailed work done to, uh, to, to cost it out. But, um, I, I think the question about whether or not we want to even consider air conditioning, is, is a big one because it's one on the list of, of prices. It was one of the biggest items on Frank's, um,
List.
List of costs of things that he's going to do. It's one of the single biggest cost items and it might be, and, uh, it probably will affect the whole timing of the project. So, you know, I, I don't know. Maybe we should have some input from the, the residents that are here also. Cause I think there's probably, uh, some, what do I want to call it? Difference of opinion or uncertainty among the three of us even in terms of this issue. I mean, rather than trying to sort of say, oh, it's, we agree. I'm, I'm not sure we, we have enough information to agree now. But I, I would not like to see us thinking that, oh, if we spend 600, we can go back to the next town meeting and get 300 more or something. Emily's sitting over there thinking, any more money goes to me, doesn't it?
No, but at this point, we're still looking at the feasibility of whether or not air conditioning makes sense. Lindsay?
Hold on, you guys. I don't have an opinion. I have an actual question. 90% of that Whipple Hall, you know, gathering space is windows. Are those windows energy efficient? Or is that going to lead into kind of what Janet, you know, mentioned, condensation? And then, you know, are you losing a vast majority of, um, heating or cooling through those?
Those are historic windows, so they're not going to change. They have storm windows on them now. There is a number in the budget to replace those storm windows. Believe it or not, the only way you can open those storm windows is from the outside.
Sure.
I don't know why.
No, I, I just, if, if the building is literally 90% that we're discussing here, it just seems like that should play into the discussion.
Included in the budget mostly because of shoulder seasons where people might want to open the windows and turn the air off. And right now it's not practical to do that other than to just change them on a seasonal basis.
Okay. But that's not factored into, um, you know, how practical putting in air conditioning is as opposed to how energy efficient those windows are in the first place? So we can't change the windows, what you're saying, because they're historical?
The primary windows, the, the storm windows are there, but are looked to be changed as part of this project.
Okay.
Is there another, oh, John Ellis?
So the, uh, once the storm windows are up, it's impossible to get fresh air into that room. Is that?
They, they can be opened from the exterior, but it takes Bob Harrington's people to come over and get on ladders and do it. So it's a seasonal thing if they're opened at all.
Right. So in, in the warmer weather, they would, I assume we would take the storm windows off?
I think they just open.
Or whatever, have Bob, uh, prepare. Are we looking at, uh, have we considered, uh, split air, heat and air in the building? A split air unit where you can run the same heating unit, uh, either to heat or to cool that room?
There was an estimate put in for pricing for the bond issue. The engineering has not gone any farther than just a ballpark price. There is a question which I don't know if it's been answered definitively. And that is the energy committee's desire to go to heat pumps in a building that has a boiler that's only, I think, a couple or three years old. So that will at least be a question to be, be answered as to whether to move to that level now or wait on that part.
Right. Currently that system that's two years old heats the building adequately for the winter months?
My understanding is that people get chilly in the basement. We're not totally clear whether that's a balancing problem on the heat or air leakage or whatever, but that'll get looked at as part of this package. Basement being part of the police department space.
So the workout room gets chilly. You gotta work out more. Okay. Um, all right. Uh, that's all my questions.
Okay. So to summarize where we are. So it sounds to me like we are asking you to move forward with Frank and look at the feasibility at least, um, of air. It sounds like the balcony is not something that, um, the members of the board, and I haven't heard anything from anyone else, um, see as feasible or practical at this point in time. Um, and that we want to, uh, complete, uh, the projects that we had identified under the, the warrant to go forward. Is there anything to add or detract from that, Janet or Bill?
And then as I understand it, we're, we're going to have a sit down in the next week or two to sort of figure out how, how the process will work. Part of that discussion will involve, how do we do interim estimates? So we're not too far off track of a budget when we finally get to the end of this process.
Exactly.
I don't have a real clear answer to that.
It's a pretty hazy crystal ball these days. Yeah.
So, and you are going to be the representative of us in those discussions?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I, that's, I think that's a good summary, don't you, Janet?
Yeah. Well, I think that's great. I, um, I would add that I feel very strongly that we have $600,000 and that's it. That we're not going to go over that amount, um, that we should get, take care of the things we can afford to take care of. And if we come in at 575 because we're not doing one more thing that would push us over 600, then that's fine. That's what we'll do. That's, at least that's what I feel we should do.
Okay. So then just quickly on this issue, or maybe not quick, on the issue of the owner's representative and, and project management. It's not clear, it, it's not clear to me whether at this point, um, given what we've said, that the combination of you all, because of the work that you've done so far on Whipple, and you've said you've worked together well with Frank, answers that question or whether you're thinking that we need to have yet another layer of, um, people or representation here to provide advice and consultation, negotiate, uh, prepare schedules, um, uh, cost definitions, et cetera. That sort of seems to me that's maybe the three of you with, uh, with, uh, Nancy or, uh, and Frank? Or are you thinking that that's not adequate project management?
No, I think, I think I saw, and speaking for myself, Peter, that Whipple is, is a medium-sized project. It's not building a new building and it isn't, you know, fixing up a room someplace. And that somewhere between the combination of town employees, the architect and his consultants and the subcommittee, we can make this work with that team of people. I think Kim would agree that we, we got through the AV project, okay. But there was a lot of, are you going to do this? Am I going to do this? Who's talking to this guy? You know, who, you know, what? And that's what I'm just trying to get sorted out before we get into this. Um, among the three of us, I, I think we have sort of just a, a broad view that I may take the lead through the design phase and Rip may take the lead through the construction phase. That's where our backgrounds tend to, tend to lie. We've got to stay with, you know, the ultimate financial stuff is clearly town employees. There's no question about that. But just how Kim, Bob or others, uh, fit into the, to the day-to-day managing of the project? And, you know, who is Frank working for in terms of questions and answers? That I think we can work out in a sit-down and just.
And I think we can work that out and put it to paper on a project management design.
Yep. Good. Yep. Okay.
And I would add that we use this as an example. I mean, really spend the time to think through what process we're using so that it can be replicated.
Right, for future projects.
Right, for, at some point in time, uh, Rip and Phil may not be interested in doing what they're doing now. So, you know, how do you replace that function?
Understood. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your willingness to continue to do this. I know it's been a long haul.
We're just at the beginning.
Thank you, three, all three of you. Thank you, Pete, also for your work on the, uh, facilities management project. It's been great.
Okay. Um, additional ARPA funds, potential projects. Kim?
Okay. So the ARPA funds, as we probably all know, this town of New London has received 451,003. Well, that's what is designated for the town. We've received half. We will get our other half soon, $451,003. Uh, tonight I hope that the selectmen can at least conceptually decide how you will divvy up that money or what projects you might put to it. We did hear from the water department and they, he is correct. Water and sewer are one of the seven areas that the federal government hopes we spend these funds. The other part that I, the, one of the other areas that I would suggest you focus on is the area of supporting public health response. I would recommend since water and sewer, those are, um, areas that obviously have lots of infrastructure needs, that you dedicate 50% of the $451,000 to that effort. And then 50% to supporting public health response. And I kind of came up with that based on the entire town will benefit from the 50% that supports public health response. And there's various projects that we could put to that. Um, and then the other 50% would be divided 25%, 25%, 25% sewer, 25% water. Um, and while the entire town benefits from the fact that we have, uh, such an excellent wastewater system and water system, not, they don't benefit as much as the actual users of those systems. Again, Ken Jakes was correct. The government does ex, hope and expect that we do dedicate some of the funds. Some towns will dedicate all of the funds to those efforts. So my, my recommendation is for you to consider giving 25% of the, dedicating 25% of the funds to water, which would be about 112,750, 112,750 to wastewater. And then the remainder, 225,501 to, uh, supporting public health response. And that could be things like, uh, police efforts, communications, facilities, uh, things that serve and help mitigation of the public health crisis that was COVID. I'll also add that these funds need to be committed by December 31st, 2024. I wouldn't wait that long, um, but you do have until that time and they must be spent by December 31st, 2026.
Yeah. Janet, go ahead.
Um, so with regard to public safety, all right, we understand the water and the sewer. But what types of things would the other money go for with regard to public safety?
Well, um, you can, things like, uh, one of the things, capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs. I mean, you could think of things like, uh, improvements to buildings. Um, one of the things I've been talking to the chief is, uh, the communication software. Being able to dispatch, uh, emergency personnel. That would be, um, an area where public safety would be enhanced with a, a system that would work. Um, I know some towns are buying police cruisers, um, facilities like this, you know, that could enable communications to happen during a pandemic. If we had, you know, we could put money towards clinics, health clinics, things like that. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, you know, when you're talking about services and programs to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID.
Yeah, I think I'd like a better idea.
No, I'm not suggesting you make any decisions about the funds. I'm just sort of suggesting that, you know, if you consider at least conceptually that, you know, some percentage of the funds would be used to be facilities or uses that the entire town benefits. And again, I'm not saying that the entire town doesn't benefit from our water system or the wastewater that some members, residents have. I think the entire town benefits in a big way. And again, as Ken Jakes pointed out, wastewater and sewer infrastructure is something that the government, I didn't, I never heard about the 36% or 35%, but the government does want the town to spend money there. We could also spend it on broadband, expansion of broadband, which is what Springfield did. I don't think that we need to do that, but you could.
Okay. Okay, so when do you need to make decisions? You said it needs to be decided by the 2024?
Those, the specific projects. I think tonight, at least, think about what, how do you want to divvy up the $451,000 with those various areas? There's areas where you could help small businesses that have had financial difficulties during COVID. I mean, there's lots of things you could do. What I'm suggesting is that water and sewer are areas, infrastructure needs that, very expensive. They're directly tied to health and safety. So those are easy areas because we know there's lots of need. Those projects are expensive. You heard Ken talk about his project or the precincts project. The hundred, or even if you gave the entire amount to them, you know, $400,000 is sort of a drop in the bucket, so to speak, with the water project. So I just think you ought to be starting at least to think about how you're going to divvy up the money. The law does allow us or you to give money to other governmental entities like the school district, if that's where the bleacher money can come from. If not, the operating budget. You could transfer money, even though the water precinct is not the town of New London, that is a governmental entity that it could be transferred to. So I think you should just at least start thinking about it and we can give, bring projects to you, to you consider. But I think you just need to start thinking about how you're going to divvy up the, the money.
Just one question real quick. What about projects that are already in the works?
Yep, that's fine. Yep.
I mean, I was thinking that certainly all of the IT upgrades that need to be made at Whipple Hall, which is our town hall. In the, hope that we don't in the future have to do Zoom meetings, whatever else, but that certainly would be a base for any kind of emergency or crisis. So something to think about if we could defray those costs. But in any case, we have a number of hands up. Maureen first and then Lindsay.
Maureen Pohl. I wanted to know, have you considered some kind of partnerships with the hospital or the VNA in regards to a pandemic response in the future? I mean, I think, I don't know if they get independent funds from the ARPA or if that's something that the town could get into partnership with the health organizations in town to deliver services.
Could Lou answer that?
We certainly could partner with other organizations. We could even partner with the state of New Hampshire if we wanted to. The selectmen haven't reached out. We haven't invited those folks in yet, but it's a possibility that we could.
In the health organizations you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Lindsay?
Kim, when are these funds accessible? I know you said they have to be determined by a certain point, but when are they accessible?
Right now. We have half in the bank right now and we will be getting the other half shortly.
Okay, well, and Chief Cobb, please forgive me because I'm speaking for myself, my own out-of-turn. But I asked her for another tour of the PD this past week and I was, you know, just a little shocked by how antiquated our dispatch communication system is. It's a, it's a 20-year-old system that's very loosely, if not really at all, supported. And more and more of our counterparts that pay into our system are going away from it. That would seem like a very, very worthwhile investment, I feel, for the town. And secondly, I was extremely disturbed to see that the server for all of our communications for emergency response through dispatch is still in a boiler room with, you know, huge pipes. And I just feel like that is negligent at this point and deserves immediate response and funds until we wait for something catastrophic to occur, which is going, only going to cost us more. And we don't have the means for communication which other towns pay into us for. I think those things need to be remedied immediately. And if there are funds to do so, I think that they should be allocated for it.
Nancy Marashio and then Phil.
Thank you. Kim, you said there are seven areas eligible. Could you tell us what the other ones are? Thank you.
Sure. The other ones are addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. For example, delivering assistance to workers and families, supporting small businesses, serving the hardest-hit communities and families. Address, for examples, addressing health disparities and the social determinants of health, investments in housing in neighborhoods, replacing lost public sector income revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers. Which me? No. Then investing in the water and sewer infrastructure and investing in broad-based, the broadband infrastructure. And originally, as Ken pointed out, it was really broadband and wastewater and sewer. That's, that started, but it's sort of expanded onto these other projects, so.
One of the points made in the preventive maintenance report that you all haven't had a chance to go through yet is the need for a computerized system to maintain the buildings, to predict things, to keep track of what's been done, and probably a consultant to populate that system at the beginning. So that might be something you want to keep on the list because it is a discrete piece that then get turned over to an operating person to keep it going after that.
Thanks, Phil. Phil?
Go ahead with John first.
Kim, you could give us, of these seven areas, could you give us a list of what you think the priorities in each one might be? Or is this something the selectmen decide?
That's what I'm recommending is that they consider giving 25% to water, 25% to sewer, and 50% to the other area. And, and once, if, once the selectmen sort of give us an idea as to how they want to divvy it up, then we would come up with a list of potential projects. One Phil just brought up, I know the chief has several. And then the selectmen would decide among those.
Right, but you would include Phil's idea, chief's idea, and other ideas?
Lindsay's idea, yeah, sure.
Through the, and how would one get our ideas to you through?
Email.
And it'll go in the newsletter, the, I mean, does the public know about these funds to where they could suggest?
Yep.
It's in the newsletter?
No, it's on the newsletter, but I think through these meetings, we've had a public hearing first to accept it. I think that was probably a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll be talking about it more. People, I'm sure, will watch this video tonight and be interested too, I'm sure.
Okay.
And then everybody out in this room is gonna spread the word, I'm sure.
Okay, Bill?
I would propose, so we can move on here tonight, that we accept the recommendation of putting 50% into water and sewer, 25 and 25, so that we can respond to Mr. Jakes. And then also, we can tell our sewer colleagues down in Sonopie what we're, what we're doing and that we leave open what we're gonna do with the other 50% until we've had a chance to see a menu, if you will, of activity. But I think it would be a good neighborly thing for us to do, particularly for the water precinct, to agree on the allocation of half of these funds to water and sewer.
I would agree with that. Janet? Okay. So, moving forward here, thank you. Appointment of alternate member to the library board of trustees. Sherry, I believe you have a proposal.
I do. Sherry Williams, vice chair, Tracy Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Per RSA 202-a-colon-10, library boards in New Hampshire can have up to three alternate members. These are appointed positions. The term of appointment is one year and the appointments are made by the local appointing authority. The board has identified a need for an alternate. We think it would be a good idea. There are lots of good reasons to have alternates and we have an excellent candidate. So the library board recommends that the board of selectmen appoint Joanne Palmizano as a board, board, alternate board member for a term of one year. Dr. Palmizano is a local resident, a New London resident, and a strong supporter of the library. She was one of the three candidates who ran for the two open positions in the last election. And she's very much looking forward to serving as an alternate if she's appointed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move. Is there a request? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Appointments for other boards, committees, and commissions. We have the listing in front of us. We have many that are seeking to be reappointed. Okay, how would you like to proceed on this? Is there anything on the slate that you don't?
Kim, you don't have any recommendation for a board of fire wards, is that?
That's right. I think there's one, and I'm not even sure that Bill Degen, Degenan, he applied some years ago. I put him on there. I haven't checked with him to see if his interest is still there. So I just kind of carried it over.
I think it's my understanding from talking to Steve Ensign that these two individuals wish to be reappointed.
Right, so the way I did- If their names aren't here, they wish to be reappointed on any of these.
The only change I would note, Doug Lyon had originally recommended, Barry Wright submitted an application for any place where his services could be of use. He pointed to planning zoning and salary study committee if we had one. Doug originally thought he needed an alternate position, but he doesn't. So you might want to consider Barry for either another position, like say citizens advisory or citizens committee or a panel that you might be appointing in the future. That's the only change. But everybody else on here, if their name is on there, they do request reappointment. And then in some areas, we have too many applicants for positions. So I've tried to put them where, either where chairmans need their services or you can recommend that they go on another board. I think with Barry Wright, he's willing to serve anywhere you need him.
Nancy, I had a question for you on the Housing Commission. With the recent resignation, we're getting short on female members of that commission. Is it possible to have another alternate and accommodate the, the woman who is interested in this as well as Mr. Quinn, who's obviously well-qualified?
I don't know what the statutory language on that is because it's pretty explicit.
You could have another alternate.
You can?
Right, with Linda, I, I just, I'm not sure if anybody, if any of the three of you know her personally or I don't think she's gone to a housing commission meeting. So you could invite her to see. Unless somebody knows her and, you know, I think your rules of procedure say that either a chairman recommends somebody or one of the three of you knows the person and would be a good fit.
Did she request to join the Housing Commission?
Yes.
Then I think we offer her to at least come to a meeting. And then we can make a decision.
Yeah, good. I mean, I know her and I think she'd be a good addition to the committee, but I also think that the recommendations made here is also a good one, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Can I, with regard to the citizens committee, Ann Lefler has moved. She no longer lives in New London. Could be why she didn't respond to my email. Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I would move that with the exception of changes to the zoning board administration of adjustment and the citizens committee that we approve the list.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I'll invite Linda to attend the Housing Commission.
Yes.
Is that right?
What?
They're pointing that we have our logo instead of the two selectmen.
Okay.
There you go. They're back. They're back, everybody.
Next, we have a donation of $5,000 for improvements at the Elkin Cemetery. Kim, do you want to, I believe everyone has the letter on the board.
Right, so we have a potential donation of $5,000 to the Elkin Cemetery. The cemetery trustees are in charge of the cemetery, but this writer wants to make sure that the selectmen would accept this to do something at the Elkin Cemetery. If we can't come up with a project, and I have talked to Charlie Hafner a little bit on this, if we can't come up with a project that the donor would agree to, then she won't be giving the $5,000. But I think she's thinking of something like a nice sitting area and the like. So Charlie was gonna look at it. I had hoped that this woman would be able, she was thinking she might be able to come up and actually take a look at the area, but I don't think she's going to be able to. So I guess the question is, would the selectmen accept the gift of $5,000 for the Elkin Cemetery? Assuming that we can come to an agreement with the donor of some fitting way to recognize her family. She has some family members that are buried there.
To move forward with that?
Yes.
Does anyone object? So I think we should pursue that and see what's... Cemetery person's name?
Charlie Hafner. Yeah, he's one of the cemetery trustees and Nancy Kingsley.
They could come up with a proposal that would work. Thank you. Okay, Bill, selectmen's meeting dates for July and August?
Well, I just want to-
I understood that was you.
Well, it's, it's me because I want to affirm that we're gonna continue on the second and fourth Thursdays. Is that, everybody's okay?
Yep.
I think because we said we were going to practice this schedule through June and I think it's been working out pretty well. And then I was gonna ask whether or not, given the summer and the nice weather and so on, whether we might meet a little earlier so that we don't go on into the evening. Could we start, say, at four or five o'clock instead of six?
How about 10:00 in the morning? Or nine?
I, I guess I don't understand the earlier meeting time.
Well, it means then we could be, go home and have dinner and, you know, go to the playhouse or go to the theater or whatever. But it's just, just a thought that, you know, it's, we're all out around doing things and, you know, could we meet at four or five o'clock and go till six or seven instead of going on to eight? That's all. It's not a major issue. It's just a, just a thought.
Or, since we did meet formally during the day in the morning, I was wondering maybe if we could meet at nine o'clock in the morning?
No, I would not agree to changing the time of the meeting. I think we've already disrupted things enough by changing the day. Personally, I liked Mondays and would be more than willing to go back to Mondays, but it doesn't sound like you two would like to do that. But I would not like to change the time of the meetings. I think that we have a number of people who work and that this is the time that they can make the meetings and I think it makes it more available to people.
Fair enough. So then can we agree on the second? It'll be the 14th and 28th of July and the 11th and 25th of August at six o'clock?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah.
John, did you have your hand up?
No, I, you said exactly what I was gonna-
Oh. Okay, so we have Town Administrator's Report.
Okay. You may have seen or heard, or you will see when Municipal Matters comes out, hopefully tomorrow, swap shop. There are some citizens who are working with Bob Harrington and they are trying to get a swap shop at the transfer station, something a little bit more formal, if you can say formal for a swap shop, at the transfer station so that it can be opened two days a week by volunteers. Lots of towns in the area have swap shops with volunteers, so they're trying to do it. So if you know of people who would like to volunteer for the effort, please let them know. please let them know. There's a phone number of the citizen who's heading it up. Household hazardous waste collection. The hospital days parade used to start at two o'clock. It's going to start at ten AM, which conflicted with the household hazardous waste day, which started from nine to noon, which would be completely impossible if Main Street was closed. So instead of nine to noon on Saturday, August sixth, at the New London Highway Garage, it will be noon to three. We have, we'll also put that in municipal matters. It's on the website and you'll see new corrected posters around town.
What's the date?
August sixth. And so you'll go to the parade first at ten and get some food at the midway or whatever, and then bring your household hazardous
And then bring all your refuse to the
Exactly, to the highway. And I feel kind of bad because I was a part of not realizing that hospital days was on the sixth. I didn't know they were going to change the time, but it really shouldn't have been on the sixth anyway. But, so I might volunteer my time there. So we'll see. I was contacted by Comcast and they're looking, I guess this House Bill two is a broadband extension partnership bill. I'm so, they would like to meet with me to talk about that. I'm not aware of what areas of New London, but we can find out about that. I spoke with DOT regarding I eighty nine and Steve Wolf's request that there be a new sign saying rest area five miles ahead. They are, the state is not inclined to do that. I thought it would be something easy, like just putting a little sign under an existing sign. No, the federal regulations of highway signage is not so easy. It would be a considerable expense to the state and I don't think the town would want to offer to spend the ten or fifteen thousand dollars to put a sign in with. So I would recommend that we tell Mr. Wolf that we did look into it and feel that it's, at this time at least, the state's not willing to do it. The second issue I talked with the state about was the West Side Drive issue, coming out of West Side Drive. The residents of that area feel the speed limit of fifty miles an hour is too fast. The state invited us to do a speed study, which our police department is doing. We will get the speed data and that will be given to the state. If the speed shows that it should be lowered, they will lower it. I, you know, I think it's, it'd be hard to imagine that people are already going thirty or forty miles an hour there. And that's what we would need to show in the speed study to lower it. But anyway, our police department's looking into that and we will get that information. I'll get back to the West Side Drive folks. They did hand out budget expenditures to you. Lynn and I will also be making some adjustments when we talk to auditors. Some things will come out, but we do have, and again, as Bill pointed out, we've had less and less going into the unreserved fund balance because our budgets are tighter and tighter. But we'll be talking to you going forward. We start our new budget July first. Fuel expenses are up. I've already talked to Bob Harrington. His budget starts July first. If fuel gasoline prices continue to climb, he's going to have to be doing things like less paving or making accommodations. The selectmen may decide that you don't want to, say, reduce paving. You may decide to take it from other areas. And we'll be talking about that in the coming months. Our fuel for our buildings, heating fuel, same thing. So we're going to have to be looking at those things and then looking at items in the budget that could wait potentially for another year or whatever. But we'll, we'll be looking at that closely. But I know we talked about the fuel expenses during budget process, but I don't think anyone expected it's to can go up as high as this and there's really no one in sight. You know, the Iraq war obviously is a big piece of it. So, but I will be talking to you about that. Looking at those budgets, you can, you know, if you have questions, let me know. But we can put it on another agenda to get into it a little bit deeper if you'd like.
Well, I'd ask that we review it and perhaps have it as an agenda item for the next meeting.
So in the meantime, if there are specific questions that you have for Lynn and I, and again, once you have a call into the auditors, we have a, oh, you did? Amazing. There you go. There's one.
That's always nice.
It is nice. Well done. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting if that gives you all time to look at it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Committee meetings and reports, Janet?
No, we haven't.
Okay, Bill? No, well, we had a housing commission meeting and it was really to debrief again the series that they had with the panel and to talk about potentially the next panel that would most likely include developers and potential builders. And talking about continuing to do a marketing piece relative to having people be informed about housing needs in New London. So the committee is meeting several more times in June and July. So that's where we are at this point. Meeting minutes, we just got the seventeenth. We don't have the twenty sixth, so we'll hold off on that. Upcoming meetings and special events. We have the meeting scheduled. Town offices are closed Monday, July fourth. Any other business?
I moves that under RSA ninety one dash three, colon, three, eleven, subchapter D, that we go into non-public session to discuss the buying, selling or leasing of real property.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Janet?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.